Welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. I call to order the Committee of the Whole Meeting, October 12th, 2021. Can we take roll call, please?
Ms. Dioroff.
Here.
Mr. Foose.
Here.
Mrs. Hogan.
Present.
Mrs. McWhorter.
Here.
Ms. Nyman.
Here.
Mr. Updugrove.
Here.
Mr. Brophy.
Here.
Mrs. Denon.
Here.
Mr. Hemingway.
Here.
All present.
Stand for Pledge of Allegiance in moment of silence. Ms. Torch, as we get started, since you're manning the phone for Ms. Dioroff, could you just let her line tell her now, Ms. Dioroff, if there's any time that, since we can't see your hand raised or whatever, it won't take offense if you shout out, just, you know what I mean. Just, since everyone else is here, just let us know, because I don't want anybody not to be heard. We did just have a previous executive session that lasted 35 minutes, and it was for informational purposes. And that was this evening, October 12th. Brings us to public comment period number one. I understand that there is nobody signed up for that comment period. All right. We do have approval of some minutes. I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes from September 28th, 2021, and that was a Board of Directors' meeting minutes, Committee of the Whole.
The boarder moves. Hogan.
All right, we're going to go with Ms. McWhorter and then Ms. Hogan. Any questions or comments from anyone? Okay, let's go to a vote.
Ms. Dioroff. Mr. Foose.
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan.
Yes.
Mrs. McWhorter.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mr. Updugrove.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Mrs. Denon.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next we have some discussion and some information. Chief Leatherman, thank you for being here. He's going to give us an update on a little bit of the school traffic. Chief Leatherman, please.
Just to add, I had reached out to Chief Leatherman, as I know that with the transportation challenges that we have in the district, and the number of parents that have been volunteering to transport their children to school, that we have seen an increase in traffic throughout our school district as a whole. And but we are seeing some different things happening within the borough of Boyertown, oh my goodness, the Borough of Boyertown and Culberdale Township. And I did ask Chief Leatherman if he would come out and speak to what he's seeing and the collaboration that we have going on between the school district and the Eastern Berks Police Department.
Okay, thank you all for having me, and I think I really feel like I'm here more to answer questions and facilitate discussion for whatever you want to talk about with these issues, and basically just try to be helpful and be a resource. Really, so to summarize again with what Mrs. Torch has said is that we're seeing an increase, a significant increase, in the volume of parent pickup traffic at all the schools in our jurisdiction, which is Culberdale Township and the Borough of Boyertown, and Bechtlesville, but we don't have schools in Bechtlesville. So we're talking about the High School, Middle School West, and Boyertown and Culberdale Elementary Schools. And again, all four of those schools, we're seeing a lot more parent pickup traffic at the dismissal times, to the point in all four of those schools cases where it's backing up onto the public roadways to varying degrees at the different ones of the four schools, and also to varying degrees based on different times. It seems that it's very inconsistent and unpredictable. The most significant issue that we had by far was with the high school, and the problem that we were having really ever since the beginning of school up until prior to the beginning of last week, we had an issue with the parent pickup traffic that was backing up onto the borough streets, was in direct conflict with the normal bus route, the route that the buses historically have always taken from Middle School West to the high school at dismissal time. The buses could not make that trip because of the backed-up parent pickup traffic. So we actually had to reroute the buses a different way, and that created some other concerns with the traffic flow in the borough streets. Dr. Foley and I have been communicating regularly about that. Dr. Foley attended a Boyertown Borough Council meeting with me last Monday where we talked about what some of the solutions may be going forward if that condition there persists. Ironically, since we spoke at that meeting, it seems like it already is starting to revert somewhat to previous levels of parent pickup traffic at the high school. So one problem there seems to have resolved for now. We're going to continue monitoring it. Dr. Foley and I just talked, and we may try next week sometime going back to the previous route for the buses, and we'll continue to communicate and monitor that. The other, I would say, second-most significant issue with this is at Culberdale Elementary School. You know, Mrs. Torch and I talked about that early in the school year. I know Ms. Nyman brought a concern forward about that. And again, it's been very inconsistent. And up until, again, the beginning of last week, every time that I had looked at that, I didn't see much of a problem. I saw a few cars backing up here and there at times. It was usually for a very brief duration, and only one or two cars, maybe three, in either direction, usually not both at the same time. I went out last Tuesday and looked at it, and it was the worst that I had seen yet at Culberdale. I know also since then that the township has gotten a complaint about it, and I believe that'll be on the next Board of Commissioners' agenda to discuss at their meeting. I don't know what will come of that as far as suggestions or direction from the township commissioners. So I won't speak for them at this point because I haven't discussed it with them, but that has been a growing problem. However, even since then, and I've observed it a couple of times since the beginning of last week, and although the volume of traffic backed up on the roads has increased and it's narrowed it, it's definitely not a condition that we would like to see, I haven't seen any urgent situation as far as any near misses, almost collisions, or anything like that. Perhaps some people have. I haven't been there all the time, every time, but I've been trying to monitor it as closely as I can. And most of what I have observed is drivers being patient, taking their turn, and it's been working out pretty well. We have similar conditions at Boyertown Elementary backing up on Second Street going east into Montgomery County. I think there have been some residents in Montgomery County, not in our jurisdiction, but that have complained about their driveways being blocked. But it really does not, again, to me, does not appear to be a hazard of moving traffic there because it's a wide enough street, and the line of traffic backed up is able to stage along the curb, and traffic can still flow in both directions most of the time. Middle School West, same thing on South Madison Street, near the entrance to the Boyertown Park. Both directions coming into there, we have some backup at times. Sometimes it's, you know, it grows, and sometimes it's really not there, so it seems to be very unpredictable. We had, again, Dr. Foley and I talked, and we had a solution that we came up with at the high school, at least an interim solution that we implemented. We're monitoring that, working through it. At these other schools that I've mentioned, the two elementaries and the middle school, there doesn't seem to be an obvious solution emerging as to what we can do with this traffic. And I think that's why, probably why I'm here, because it's a persistent concern to which there hasn't been a real obvious or acceptable solution emerged. And I'm here to answer your questions or participate in discussion to the extent that you would like me to, and try to help in any way that I can with that.
And I've reached out to Chief Leatherman on numerous occasions, and, you know, we have gone back and forth with some ideas, and, you know, we've found reasons why those ideas wouldn't be, wouldn't work. That the patterns that we do have established, you know, yes, there's tie-ups, yes, you know, some days it's worse than it is on other days. It's for a reasonable amount of time. It doesn't seem to go beyond, you know, 15 minutes, you know, approximately, once the dismissal lets out. So we are continuing to look at, you know, all of the buildings here in the borough and Culberdale Township to come to any kind of, you know, answer, I guess, to how we could make things flow better. And, you know, obviously, we've been working very closely with the high school. So, you know, I appreciate you taking time out of your evening to be here, to, you know, support us. I do want to share that it's not just happening in the borough. Middle School East is probably by far our biggest problem, which is well outside of Chief Leatherman's jurisdiction. That's something that we are working on. We have staff that are reaching out to every official imaginable to be able to help with what's going on there in front of Middle School East. And a lot of the problem is due to a newly-installed traffic light somewhere along Route 73 that has, you know, brought traffic to a halt. The unfortunate part about where Middle School East is located is the fact that it's a 45 mile an hour speed zone, even though there's a school there, and even though it's the time the school is dropping off or picking up students, it doesn't change. So we are trying to work with officials to remedy that. You know, the one roadblock that we constantly are being faced with is the fact that not much can change if you don't have a walker. It's almost like we have to have one student walk to school to be able to have some type of school zone traffic light, and that's the response that we've been getting. But we have a great team that's working together, and we're going to continue to advocate for, you know, that school and trying to bring traffic to a little bit slower of a pace. New Hanover Upper Frederick, Washington Elementary, and Earl Elementary all seem to be doing well. Washington has ample space around their campus, so therefore, we're not seeing an overflow. And the same with New Hanover. Mr. Roan has said that he's not experiencing the same things. Gilbertsville, it depends on which days you're there. I know that some people here get to see Gilbertsville traffic more than others. And Mr. Stout and I did park in the parking lot, and we were like, we're not seeing traffic. Well, we evidently sat in the wrong parking lot, not watching the right flow. So we are staying on top of it, working with the officials, and, you know, continuing to try to, you know, make as least of an impact on our community with our school traffic as possible. So thank you again, Chief Leatherman. We appreciate you being here. I'm not sure if any of our members of the board have any questions or comments for the chief. Mrs. Hogan?
Thank you. Yeah, I just have a quick clarifying question. Are the concerns only at dismissal, or are they also a drop-off? Or are they worse at dismissal?
Really only at dismissal that I'm aware of. I mean, there may be an increased volume of traffic at the morning time as well, but it's not backing up and causing the traffic impact on the roadways that it is at dismissal time.
Okay, so do we know if it's impacted by parents coming early and, like, sitting out there waiting? Or are we just...
I think it probably is.
It is.
I think if parents would come later or come on a tighter time schedule, I think that would probably help. I believe there's been communication that parents... In fact, the problem is, you know, how do you make them?
Sure.
And, you know, one of the issues for us, I guess, is that we try to employ a balanced approach and try to work with people. So I guess, you know, if you wanted to be heavy-handed, theoretically, we could come along to these people that are pulled over on Montgomery Avenue, and if they have one wheel on the traffic lane, we could say, you're blocking traffic. You have to move on. But, you know, I don't think that's really what we want to do, and that doesn't necessarily solve the problem, but may move the problem a little bit. Because now you have them driving around the block, which is a big block in the case of Culberdale School, you know, perhaps driving all the way through Boyertown, out on North Reading Avenue, and back to Montgomery Avenue to come back to the same place two or three minutes later. You know, that's just putting more traffic driving around on the road. So we're trying to, again, employ a balanced approach, work with the people. If there's any... We're out there on patrol. We make that a priority. I have a directive out to the department that at school dismissal and opening times, the officers, unless otherwise committed, on a priority-type call, we're out there on patrol, watching these things around the schools, to be there for the schools. So we're out there looking for problems to solve, if there's something that is urgent that needs to be dealt with. And of course, if somebody calls, we'll be there. But as far as if the traffic is still flowing, even if it's slowed down, backed up a little bit, as long as it's getting through and it's working out, we try to be a little bit hands-off because we don't want to be heavy-handed. We want to try to work with people. And ultimately, the goal is get the kids picked up and get them out of the school safely and on their way. And if we can accomplish that with minimal inconvenience and without resorting to any kind of enforcement action, I think that's probably what everybody wants to see.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
I just want to follow up and say that the biggest challenge is the parent pickup, because we don't want parents getting out of the cars. So the youngest students who need assistance in getting buckled into their seat takes a lot of the staff, and that is taking up the time. So, you know, we are trying to keep the flow of traffic moving, and I know that Mrs. Mason has a team and herself are at their parent pickup line, and they're putting kids into the, obviously, the proper cars, getting them buckled in, and getting parents to move along. So, you know, it's the youngest ones who, you know, bring the most challenge when we're putting them into cars. The buses are easily loaded. That's not as challenging.
I would add, too, that with respect to Culberdale, and I think this goes to the question of, is it because parents are coming early? There is a definite period of time where the line is growing before it moves. And once it starts to move, my observation has been that it moves quickly.
Yeah, I'm glad you guys are out there. However, I'm hearing it all over. I'm seeing it. It's a nightmare when it's out there. I've seen buses trying to get into the lot that can't get in because of the line, that way or that way. They're pulled partway into people's yards. It's a nightmare. And my concern is one accident, one person hurt, or somebody killed because of this. Because you have people sitting out here heading that way, towards Reading Avenue, and they're motioning people to come around them. Now, people on the other side are motioning people to come around them. You're having people come... Somebody's going to get hit, and then it's too late.
Right, well, and I don't disagree that it's not an ideal situation. And I'm happy to work with this board, as well as my boards that I work for, and try to work together to come up with solutions and implement whatever the people that are policymakers, which is you guys and the township and the borough and their streets want to implement. I just, I'm at a loss at this point to come up with a real good suggestion. I wish I could, but...
And you have drug plastics leaving out at quarter after three, which adds to the traffic flow here yet.
Right.
So, I mean, it's... Somebody's going to get hit, and then it's too late. That's my worry.
I think we should put some responsibility in the drivers also. You know, you can have the safest conditions and a knucklehead driver. So maybe we need to concentrate on at least having them more aware of a school zone, if you will, or just keep communicating to them that, you know, this is dangerous machines that they're driving. A lot of things can go bad real quick. So again, you know, we do have to put responsibility in the parents that are dropping their kids off. My child goes to East, and I've seen some real boneheaded things going on. It's a good... The flow is good. The parents are patient. The drivers on 73 are patient. But all it takes is one impatient parent who's in a rush late for work or wants to, you know, get in the front of the line. So, again, we just have to put responsibility in the drivers also.
Mrs. Portia. Are we not using the side of Culberdale Elementary School more because if we would pick the children up, either way, the...
Either way, the traffic, it would be intersecting. It would seem like it would be a great area for the traffic to wind, but it would still be intersecting. So they would have to be going in. They would be pulling up. We would hope that they would all have, you know, a backseat. But if we would have to walk that child around to the other side, that's when it becomes unsafe. Whereas the parent pickup line is right to the curb. The student gets right in.
I might add, too, it was just pointed out to me, too, that Montgomery Avenue is a state road. So when it comes to local changes to the traffic flow, traffic regulations and things like that, we have a little bit of an impediment there as well. We obviously enforce the traffic laws on state roads, but we locally don't have the ability to change the traffic regulations or make physical improvements to the roadway and things like that. That would have to involve PennDOT.
I would imagine there's no way to stagger times between buses and cars. Don't know how that would work, or if that's been looked at and determined not to work.
We do have it staggered. However, we would have to actually go out and make a physical barricade for the parents not to be coming into the parent pickup and then open it up, and I'm not really sure what that would do.
Mrs. McWhorter?
Yes, so I have two questions or comments. One, is there anything, like, can we put cones in the road? Or even a sign that says, you know, "Slow School Pickup Zone" during that period of time? Is that something that our staff can put out there? And then before you answer that, my second question is, you've spoken to the parents. You've sent stuff home. Can we literally hand it to the parents during their pickup to come later? A sign, not a sign, but a piece of paper saying, "Please come later", if that is something that would help them?
I don't think that that will change the traffic that's being stopped or lined up because they're still lining up for the parent pickup portion of it, which is the largest. However, having it staggered, you know, between the buses and the parents certainly could be, you know, what we would be recommending. With regards to the signs, Chief Leatherman and I had spoken about that. And right now, yes, it looks like it's a problem, but putting something out there would, you know, be making a statement. And if something did happen, then we would have a bigger problem. And that was, you know, conversation that we had, and, you know, our lawyers in the room could certainly chime in.
First of all, as far as signs, you can't put any kind of warning signs in the public right-of-way, like, along the side of the road because it's a PennDOT road. So that would have to, I mean, you could theoretically pursue that, but that would have to follow approval from PennDOT. We would have to look into, and that might be something the Board of Commissioners would talk about. But the way that that starts is the local authority has to request it from PennDOT, and then PennDOT has to approve it. The local authority has to agree to purchase, erect, and maintain the signs. There has to be a PennDOT-prescribed sign for the application. So there's a little bit of background that has to go into that before you could possibly post any kind of advisory or warning signs on the public right-of-way. As far as any kind of temporary signage or cones or anything like that, again, as Mrs. Torch said, that was my reaction when we talked about that, is I think you have a little bit of risk that once you intervene, you somewhat become responsible. In other words, the school is not, township is not, the police department is not creating the problem at this point. If we go and do something, if we do some kind of intervention, we have to make sure it's the right intervention because we're responsible for what we do and the results that follow from that. And, you know, I think if you put cones in the middle of the roadway, then you're... The other thing you're doing is you're forcing people to, onto one side or the other, and kind of narrowing the pathway. Whereas as long as it's open, if they're taking turns, that theoretically works pretty well, as long as everybody's being patient and respectful. Again, I know that's not what always happens, but I think it is for most drivers right now, with exceptions from time to time.
Mrs. Dioroff. Thank you. Mrs. Dioroff, did you have any questions for Chief Leatherman?
On the off chance, it's backed up like it's been a couple times, and a fire truck comes down through and can't get through.
I think the fire truck will get through. I think people will move for the fire truck. That happens at congested intersections and busy roadways all the time where there's traffic, and they move out of the way for the fire truck.
We might see it someday.
If somebody leaves their car parked there unattended, that could be a problem. We wouldn't let that happen for too long. But as long as there are drivers in the cars, I think they'll get out of the way.
There's times it's so hectic out here. I sit out here five, 10 minutes before I can move. Because I tried to be patient, wanting to sit there.
Well, again, I'm open to working with everyone, all of our stakeholders, to implement whatever solutions we can come up with together. But short of telling people to move and say, "You can't be here," I'm not sure what else we would do at this point.
Yeah, so I actually have a comment. So prior to moving up here, my children went to a school with a very difficult situation with parent pickup time. And what they did was they staggered dismissal times per grade, and the oldest kid got pulled down and went dismissed with the youngest child, so it was dismissal by family. You had to put your child's name in your window. And if you did show up prior to buses, you were redirected right out of the parking lot and back through, no matter how inconvenient it was for you, which was something that seemed to, you know, discourage showing up earlier than the buses. People did not want to have to get rerouted out and have to go around. So I don't know if those are options, but if it's that bad, maybe it's something to look into. I appreciate it.
Not seeing any other questions for Chief Leatherman. Thank you very much for your time. Again, I appreciate our collaboration, and I enjoy working with you. So, thank you, Chief.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Chief. All right, now, on the same topic of traffic control, we have a presentation from Culberdale in regards to a project. But in terms, Mr. Saltanic, I'd like to just hand it over to you for a minute.
Hello. With us today is Mr. Jeffrey Carver, who is the Solicitor for Culberdale Township. And he has committed, on behalf of the township, to go over the township's plans regarding the signalization of the intersection. With me from my firm is Lauren Chesney, who you do know, who has been working on this longstanding issue for many years. And Mr. Carver, you're very familiar with this room and with this district, so we look forward to your presentation. In the spirit of full disclosure, both myself, Lauren, and school board members will have some questions. But your presentation could be so comprehensive that we may not have any.
I'm sure it will be.
Okay.
With me tonight is Todd Gamler. Todd is seated here in the red shirt. Todd is the President of the Board of Commissioners in Culberdale Township. And I'm the Solicitor, as Jeff said, for Culberdale Township. By way of background, we're talking about the intersection out here, just out here at the end of the street, Henry Avenue, Montgomery Avenue, North Reading Avenue. In 2013, 2014, this district committed to the project where you were going to bring ninth graders into the senior high school. And you had to enlarge the senior high school to accommodate, or at least renovate, the senior high school to accommodate the ninth graders. As part of that project, the borough was concerned that additional students meant additional buses, perhaps additional parent vehicular traffic in the borough. And they came to the school district and entered the township and asked if the school district could find a second way out of your high school parking lot to alleviate some of the traffic that, at that time, and probably still at present, goes in up Monroe Street to East Philadelphia Avenue and then turns east or west on East Philadelphia Avenue. The township cooperated, and we agreed to support the district's proposal to extend North Monroe Street past the Bear Stadium all the way out here to Montgomery Avenue and to create an exit here on Montgomery Avenue for traffic, both bus and vehicular traffic, leaving the senior high school. We agreed that the, we, the township and the district, both agreed that Henry Avenue was a bad intersection, a dangerous intersection. And if you've lived around here for any length of time and traveled through that intersection, you'll agree, I think, and you'll understand that it is, in fact, a substandard intersection. And I was a speech communication major in college, and they always told you, told me to have handouts available. One of the problems with wearing these masks is that you're unable to lick your fingers to distribute papers anymore, so... Just, I guess, but just another one of the issues. At any rate, what I'm handing out to you is a letter, and I hope I have enough. I think I printed 10 or 11. It's a district letter that was written in support of a grant application. And the only reason I'm giving that to you is I'm highlighting the last sentence in the second paragraph. And these are the words of the school district. Obviously, these buildings, which are the senior high school, Colbert Dale Elementary, and transportation near bus lot, obviously, these buildings put a tremendous stress on this intersection during student arrival and dismissal. The addition of a traffic signal would certainly increase safety at this intersection. And that's what we were talking about back in 2013, 2014. And it's more than just a traffic light. There are other improvements, and I'll show you those in a second, to this intersection. But we agreed back in 2014 to look at improvements to that intersection with a goal of improving the safety at that intersection for buses, for student vehicular traffic that's going to pass through that intersection. The township agreed to pursue the project in our name because of those roads, at least one of, only one of them, Henry Avenue is a township road. The other two, North Reading Avenue and Montgomery Avenue, as we mentioned a moment ago, are state roads. But because we were the owners of Henry Avenue, we were the applicant in the project to PennDOT. We agreed to do that. We talked with the district about handling the costs of the design and construction of it. And the district agreed at that point, I believe, to be responsible for the cost of design of the intersection. At one point in our conversations, this is back in 2014 or 2015, the district actually came to the township and offered us $800,000 and said this would be the full district, this was the offer, that this would be the full district's contribution to both design and construction of the intersection. And you asked the township to agree to be responsible for the remainder of the project. The township declined that offer at that time because we were uncertain whether it was another $100,000 or another $500,000 that we'd be looking at. So there was just too much uncertainty. So we, that offer never went any further. Over the years since that time, since 2014, we've spent years working with PennDOT. And you've spent lots of dollars and we've spent significant dollars working with PennDOT to come up with a design for that intersection. It got so bad that at one point, PennDOT asked us to design a traffic circle for that intersection. And our engineer said, a traffic circle won't work at that intersection. There's too much slope, too many houses, too close, so a traffic circle wouldn't work. We had to spend, I think, in excess of $20,000 to actually have our engineer design a traffic circle for that intersection to prove that it wouldn't work. I mean, these are the things we've been dealing with. And this is part of the reason why we're standing here in 2021, and this project is only now coming to fruition. We had a couple of meetings here with representatives from PennDOT and representatives from the school district here at the education center. I think to date, you've spent about $240,000 on design expenses. We've spent, as a township, we've spent over $35,000. And although that's a smaller sum, let me point out that our budget is about one-tenth the size of your budget. So as a percentage of our annual budget, that's a pretty significant sum for the township. This winter, we finally got PennDOT approval. And I've got a plan here.
While you're gathering that, Ms. Danicola, how much has the district spent to date on design, according to your records? Pardon me?
The district has spent $247,080.31.
So I was pretty close with my $240,000 estimate. That's what we've been hearing. But at any rate, if you look at this plan that's in front of you now, it's a two-page plan. The first page is the bulk of the intersection, Henry Avenue, Montgomery Avenue, North Reading Avenue. The second page, actually, you'll see that it extends down past what's now the Circle K. Some of the improvements to the road are going to go down that far. And if you look carefully at the plan, I don't know if you can see, but if you, if you know at present, when you come out of Montgomery Avenue and you want to make a right-hand turn to go down to Route 100, there's actually a little cutoff road there that passes right in front of the Living Faith Church and some of those homes there. If you look at the plan, that's going to be closed off. That's going to be a parking area now. You're going to access that from the northern portion of it. You're going to come up there. So traffic won't be able to do that. So it's more than just a traffic light that we're talking about at this intersection for the, for the entire project. And that was the point of showing you that plan. There's a lot more work that has gone into it and will go into it than just a traffic light. We've, the township has gotten the easements from all the property owners. There's a couple of property owners who had to give up very small sections of their property. One property owner had to agree to allow their driveway to be realigned and their parking area realigned. And we've gotten approvals from all of those people. Over the past four years, the township has made five separate applications to PennDOT and to the DCED, Department of Community and Economic Development, to get grants to help with the cost of this construction. And finally, and you've cooperated with that then, and we appreciate that. You've written letters. That letter that I passed out was one of those letters. The Borough has written letters. Douglas Township has written letters. Our local representatives have written letters. So we appreciate all of that. I've got here, and I only have one, but, and you can keep it for your record. You can perhaps pass it around. This is, yeah, it's just one. That's one application. That's the most recent one that we filed. So you can see that there's a lot of work that went into that. We've done five of those over the past four years. We enlisted the help of Senator Mensch. And this summer, through, with Senator Mensch's help, we were able to get a grant of $800,000 toward the cost of that project. Right now, our engineers estimate the cost of the project is $898,000. So it's just shy of $900,000. We've gotten a grant of $800,000 toward the project. So what we're here tonight to ask, and we've asked in the past, for the district to put up, agree to put up, up to $250,000. Now, you say, if it's, if you only need $100,000, why are you asking for $250,000? First of all, it's up to $250,000. Secondly, you know much better than most of us about cost overruns and what happens with, when you get projects bid and then you get into the construction phase. A lot of times, there are expenses that are unforeseen or, for some reason, expenses are more than they've been bid. So we're asking for you to commit to up to $250,000, although we hope that it will only be about $100,000 that will actually be needed. Even if you pay this additional 250, and I don't think you will, but if it goes that high, coupled with the $247,000 that you've already paid, it's still less than $500,000. You had offered us $800,000 several years ago. So this is still, in our opinion, it's a good result for the school district. With this grant, we've been able to really shrink the contribution that we need from the school district. I'm here tonight, though, to talk to you and to say, this is more than a dollars and cents issue. Mrs. Nyman earlier tonight, and another board member, I believe, mentioned accidents and what happens if a student is hurt. I remember, and I think Mrs. Dieroff was on the board years ago, when three high school students who were going home after school and leaving on Route 100, making, wanting to make a left-hand turn on Grocer Road where the wall is now, were killed. They were struck by an oncoming vehicle when they tried to make a left-hand turn, and three of them were killed. What a lot of people don't know is that there was a school bus also sitting there in line on Route 100, wanting to make a left-hand turn at about that same time. I mean, this is a terrible, terrible tragedy that, that three students were killed. But imagine what it would have been had it been the bus that was turning at the wrong time. So we agree, I think everybody agrees, that the intersection out here is substandard and needs to be improved. We've got a plan to improve it. We've got a cost on that plan of all but $900,000. We've raised through that grant $800,000 of it. We're asking you to commit to fund the balance of it, whether it's $100,000 or another two, up to $250,000. We're asking you to contribute. And just a couple more points. We're asking for up to $250,000. If it goes to $260,000, $270,000, we're not going to be coming back here to ask you for more than that. This is the last time you'll see us making this request. Secondly, if we need $100,000 of the 250,000, that's all we're going to ask you to contribute. We're not going to ask you to contribute anything more than the actual cost above and beyond the $800,000 grant that we're committing. And once it's done, the township is going to be responsible for the ongoing maintenance, insurance, repairs, and service of the light. The district's not going to have any responsibilities cost-wise as far as that goes. We've been good partners for a number of years over in a lot of construction projects. On the high school project alone, you came to us and you asked for a number of waivers from the provisions of our subdivision ordinance. We agreed to that. Those waivers saved you tens of thousands of dollars, perhaps hundreds of thousands of dollars. On the Junior High West renovation, if you remember, about it, over the objection of our, of our own code officer, we supported your request to not have to sprinkler the entire Junior High West. The, the code was going to require that you do that. You came to the township and you asked for a waiver from that provision of the code, and we agreed to that. And that saved you probably about $100,000. On the, on the high school project, again, you know that the state required a great, it seemed like a excessive number of bathroom facilities in the men's locker room there at the stadium. We supported your request to have fewer. Now, that didn't go anywhere. I admit that. We lost that argument with the county. The county insisted on the greater number, but we supported your request. Tonight, we're asking you to support a commitment that a prior board made. And I understand that the commitment was somewhat vague. We never ironed out all of the details. But I think there's enough circumstantial evidence to, you know, to confirm that there were discussions. You were going to, you were offering at one point $800,000. I think you've set aside something like $980,000 in your capital reserve budget to cover the cost of this project. We're asking you to recommit to this project and to agree to spend up to $250,000 to finalize this project. This project will bring the high school construction project to a close. Assuming that we can get your agreement to fund the balance of the project, we plan to bid it in January or February. We'd like to do the construction in April, March, April, May. And the project should be completed and ready to go by the time the 2022, 2023 school year opens. So finally, at that point, the high school project should be fully completed. This should be the last step in that. So we appreciate your time. We'd appreciate your consideration in responding to our request for the commitment for up to another $250,000 above the money you've already spent to help us get the project to this point. Questions? Mr. Ruffegrove?
On your plan here, as far as the traffic backing up from the school out, is that going to impact the traffic light if it goes out that far? I don't know. I haven't been there. How far out does the traffic go when it backs up at the school for parent pickup?
Barry, do you know the answer to that?
So far, the Colbert Dale Elementary backup has not gone as far as spreading out.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Ma'am?
Yes.
Do you have a question, Mrs. Dieroff?
Okay.
Go ahead, Mrs. Dieroff.
Since it went up considerably from May, I'm sorry, August of 2020 to May of '21, it went up over $200,000. And I think a lot of that was COVID from what I can see on the estimates. So my question is, what's the drop dead date that this grant has to be used?
From what we know, it's a two-year window within which we have to use it. And we only got it in June or July of this year, I think. Yeah.
The prices of building a house now, well, not now, but the prices are coming down. When it was in their glory back in probably May, April, to build a new house, you had to add at least $50,000 onto it. And on these figures we have is about $200,000. So my question is, could we wait? Or would the township be against that? Could we wait till the prices come down some more?
Well, I don't.
They're coming down now.
I don't see the harm in bidding it now. I mean, it's just the, the expense of advertising and things like that to, and preparation of bid specs to bid it now. We've asked our engineer, our engineer's estimate is as of July of this year. So that's about as current an estimate as we could give you, if it turns out that that, if it turns.
I think it's not May, but.
Yeah, I think he updated it for your July meeting. So I think. The $898,000 was confirmed, I think, for your July meeting. But if we bid it and if the prices come back exorbitantly high, and if we believe that we can get a lower bid price by waiting six months or a year, we could certainly talk to the district about that. Certainly, I think the district probably is anxious to be able to fully use the exit from North Monroe Street onto Montgomery Avenue, allow traffic to go in both directions. But if you would agree and if we have no problem and if we think we can do better by waiting, I don't think we'd have a problem waiting.
Any other questions, Mrs. Dieroff?
I'm nervous on my notes. Not at this time. Thank you.
Yes, are you waiting, will you be waiting for our confirmation of our contribution before you send the set to bid?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, right now, we have $800,000 committed toward the project, but that's probably not enough to complete it based on our, you know, engineer's estimates to date.
Does the township plan on contributing any more to the cost of the construction?
We would prefer not to. I mean, we've contributed $35,000 to the cost of the design. We've contributed a great deal of time and effort. Todd, in particular, has taken time off from work to meet with residents, to meet with others, to try to pursue this project, to meet with Senator Mensch. So we would prefer not to commit other township funds. But what I said was, if the, if the costs go above $250,000, we're not going to come back to you. So that would certainly be a commitment under the township to finish this project out.
Jeff, there is, there is some, there is some additional off-site improvements that the township has agreed to pay to certain residents.
That's right.
One of the residents, their fence is getting tore down, and it's no good.
There are some certain off-site improvements that the township has agreed to the, so certain residents that signed off for the easements, that they need some additional work done at their property to make the plan work, and the township is funding that. That is not in the bid spec for the traffic light. There's some fencing that needs to be done on two different properties. It's going to be getting removed. And, and it's an older fence, so. And it's an older fence, so it doesn't make sense to replace it with the old existing fence. So we're going to be doing different things like that. Down by the trailer park, there was some additional paving and stuff like that that the township is going to be handling.
I thought everybody had signed off on that.
They did, but in order to get them to sign off, there was some additional things that they asked us to do. We have...
They knew about this? I didn't know about it.
No, because the township just handled it. Same way with trying to get the post, the post office to sign off was a nightmare. We actually had to get Madeline, or...
Madeline Dean.
Madeline Dean involved because nobody would sign off on the paperwork. We spent countless hours on trying to get that. They just kept pointing us to a different person. So there was a lot of administration work to get some of these right away is acquired.
If I could follow up on that. Can you estimate how much the additional costs from the township would be in order to fulfill your commitments on the sign-offs to the property owners?
We didn't, we didn't bid enough. We didn't get the right amount. Very minor, to be honest with you.
So when you say very minor, is this under $5,000?
Probably under $10,000.
Okay, so under $10,000. So would it be fair to say that the township's commitment to this project in terms of township dollars would amount to something in the neighborhood of about $45,000?
To date, $45,900. I had to pay $900 out of my own pocket for three meetings with Senator Mensch at his fundraiser. So so that Todd and I could attend his fundraisers, we paid the money out of my pocket. So $45,900.
Okay, understood, understood. So, and the total cost of this project, based upon what you know right now, would be what?
$898,000, I think, is the estimate that our engineer prepared. And he had prepared that in May. I agree with Mrs. Deroth. But we specifically asked him to update that for your July meeting, and he did. And he told us at that time that that, his estimate from May was good, $898,000.
And that's just for the construction costs? But if you add the total aggregate expenditures and cost for the project, when you add the $898 to the $247
And the $45...
That the district is, has already expended, and the $45,000 that you've expended, would the total cost of this project be, I'm adding that up, about $1,190,000?
I think so.
Are there any other costs that would be attendant to this project, to the best of your knowledge?
Not that I'm aware of, other than if there, and that's what I was saying, why we're asking you to commit up to $250,000. If there are extras that we're unfamiliar with, or if there's a cost overrun, or if, I don't know if there's a rock clause in the contract or something like that, then we end up paying a little bit more for removal of rock. Something like that. And you're familiar with that from your construction projects here. There always seem like there's a handful of additional costs. But other than that, Mr. Sultanic, there are none.
I hope you construe this question appropriately, but the board has asked that we ask the question is, let's assume that the currently constituted board does not seek to move forward with any additional contributions over what it has already contributed for this project. Will the township proceed with the project under those circumstances?
I don't think I know the answer to that. I mean, that, the township has not, to the best of my knowledge, considered that. So I don't know the answer to that question at this point. Certainly, we think it's an important project for the township and the school district. And to the extent that we would be able to find other financing or other grants, perhaps, we could. But we're not aware of any other grants that are out there. We were extremely fortunate to get an $800,000 grant, in our opinion, on an $898,000 project. We spent a lot of time, a lot of effort. You helped us with that, but most of that was township time, township engineer time to get those grants filed. We were unsuccessful four times in a row, and the fifth time turned out to be the charm. So we were very pleased to get that kind of grant. And when we got that grant, we thought the district would be also pleased because certainly, your contribution is a whole lot less than you've set aside, and it's a whole lot less than you offered us back in 2014, 2015.
And my last question is, you indicated that right now, are the bid specs prepared? What additional design costs would you anticipate if the project were to move forward as planned? Or are we completed with the design costs that the district has largely absorbed to date?
I think we're completed with those costs, yeah. And we haven't asked you for any additional design costs, probably for well over a year, I believe, so...
No, but I just want to be, I want to just clarify that, so the bid specs are ready, and the only, they're not. The bid specs are going to be done for no additional charge? That's my point.
The township engineer is in the process now of preparing the bid spec. So originally, we had talked about going out for bid between Thanksgiving and Christmas. Our engineer talked to numerous people in the field, and they just came back to us this week and said, we don't recommend that time to send them out. So they are preparing them. The township's paying to get the bid spec written so that it will be going out in January now. We didn't have an official meeting on that, but I'm pretty sure that's when we're going to decide to go out. I think we're, I would think our board is going to take the recommendation of our engineer to hold off on sending out the bids until January.
Okay. Let me, I, let me just follow up on that. So is it my, is my understanding correct that the township is going to absorb the costs of the bid specification preparation, the advertisement, and moving forward to let those bids now in with a January schedule?
That's correct.
Understood.
We're not looking for money, with the exception of, for the construction of the light.
Okay, so the request, and let me ask the question this way. Is this an all or nothing request? Is it $250,000 under these terms? Or is the township open to talk about a negotiated amount on this? What are you, what is your position and authorization on that subject? Is this all or nothing on the part of the district?
I don't feel comfortable answering that because we didn't discuss anything like that, and I'm only one of five, so...
Understood.
I guess, first thing is, we're talking about minor costs and stuff, and things will go up, and you might need more money for that. Don't you have an $80,000 contingency built into your budget? Isn't that what the contingency is for?
I think there's a contingency, yeah.
About $8,000.
Usually 10% or something like that.
10%. If you, 10%, 10% to 15%, I think it's just 10.
Should be $80,000, right?
$80,000. So if you find rock, that should come out of your contingency for one.
Correct, yeah.
Let's just go with that, which didn't seem to be how you were presenting that.
Okay.
Second thing is, we haven't talked about the $246,000 we gave you. It's like, that went into the wind. We gave you that money, it's gone. We don't know what, really what it is. We don't know how it counts against this project. And you have to understand, we have a fiduciary responsibility to the school district. Handing out money to anybody with no strings or no accountability for it is a violation, in my mind, of that responsibility. So I need to know more about, like, the money we already spent. How did that get handled against the, against the project?
I think you've gotten invoices from the township for all of those.
Yeah, but we don't even talk about that. And so, we don't even talk about that. You keep telling us the project's $898,000, but that doesn't count the $246,000 that's already gone. So you're well over $1 million in this project. And that seems out of range for that type of, for the type of project that this is, based on, based on PA results?
The $247,000 was for the engineering to get PennDOT approval for the traffic light.
Okay.
One of the issues we had with PennDOT was, we had a sit-down with PennDOT and the school district in this building, a round table, and we had a concept plan to try to reduce the amount of times PennDOT would send it back, this and that. And our, the engineers sat there and said, we're going to see, we want to see this, or we want to see that. So we submitted the first set of plans to PennDOT. And that's when they find things that they want clarification on, blah, 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 send it back to us, okay? And it was like five or six comments. Our engineer addressed those comments, sent it back in, thinking, okay, the next letter we'll get will be, we got approval. We come to find out, at PennDOT, when we sent it in, somebody different reviewed it, and they had different ideas. So instead of getting it back with approval, or, well, we need one more justification here, or something like that, it came back with 19 new comments. And I don't know how many times that happened to us. The amount of time it took us to get this through PennDOT for approval for the light was just ridiculous.
PennDOT, I understand.
Right. So as far as invoicing, our engineer invoiced us. You guys got copy, you know, the school district got copies of the engineer's invoices. And that's where we got reimbursed to pay the engineer. So that's where the $247 went. There's documentation for all that.
Yeah, we have that.
Right.
It's just, it doesn't seem to matter. It doesn't seem to be counted in the overall cost of what we've put out.
No, no, what...
So it seems, that's all...
We acknowledge that you paid, that you paid for the engineering and to get PennDOT approval.
Yeah.
So now, the next step is to build the traffic light.
So the original offer of $800,000, we're really not getting much of a deal on it because there's still $500,000. But that's not the point. We're going to put this out, you're going to put this out for a bid in probably one of the most inflationary times we have. All your costs are going to be, materials are hard to get. They are, it's hard to get. Your waiting times are going to be immense. And labor, and labor's kind of tough. And also, getting construction and contractors are going to be tough. I think Mrs. Deroth had a good point as to, this is not the right time to even be putting the bids out. Well, if we, if your sunset clause on your, on your, on your grant gives us time, we should be looking at moving this out.
It does.
And then negotiating this.
It does. But like Jeff had said, we can put this out for bid in January. And if those costs do come back ridiculous, we reject all bids, and then we can go to Plan B. But to sit here tonight and say that you definitely know it, when our engineer, there's actually a PennDOT page that they can go to, and they can see cost of similar projects. And that's where they get their cost estimates from. And he felt very, very confident on that price.
But in my experience, which had some, a little bit in it, once I commit to $250,000, it's going to cost me $250,000. I'm just, I'm just telling you from past experience. I've done this a few times.
But that's specifically not...
So you're asking me to commit to a number I'm not comfortable with?
That's, that's not what we said. You know, I specifically said that if it's $98,000...
I know what you said. I got what you said. You said up to $250,000. So once I commit to up to $250,000, I need to, I need to actually say I'm going to spend $250,000. And that's like I do. I mean, as, as a district representative, I have to figure on the, on the amount up to as what it's going to cost me.
And maybe you have to set that aside. I agree with that.
Well, I agree with you.
But if it ends up being $100,000 or $150,000, that's what we'll ask you to contribute.
And that's great.
We're not going to ask you to contribute $250,000 if the project comes in at 950 or 975,000.
And that's, that's what we have to think about. As to, are we comfortable with committing to $250,000? In my mind, that's what we have to commit. That's what we have, we have to talk, we have to, we're ourselves talk.
I agree, you have to say that that's what, what the maximum exposure would be.
Or are we willing to go to that maximum exposure?
Yeah, just a couple of clarifying questions. So the, okay. Yeah, just a couple of clarifying questions. So the, I think we've established that the cost of the project is $898,000, including contingency. So that's, that's a contingency. And since we have those contingencies in there, except for the fact that we're doing this in a time where there is an incredible amount of inflation with projects, that that's where, that's where this could go awry, where we go. So it is legitimate to say, maybe we have to hold off on six months to a year. The other thing that caught my attention is, you've, you've made the point that you contributed only $35,000, but your budget is 1/10 of our budget. So am I to, am I to assume that this light would never have come to fruition because Culverdale never had money to do it unless you got a grant? So, so you've been applying for grants for years and years and years because you had, you had no money in your budget for it? Or were you applying for grants just because to give us a break? Because you knew that we had, we had, you know, $800,000?
We only, we only started applying for this grant after the township and the district agreed to go ahead with this project.
Okay.
So we have not been applying for grants for this project before 2014, 2015.
Okay.
So we did it to reduce the cost exposure for both of us. But primarily for you because we believed that you were going to carry the lion's share of this cost from the beginning of the project.
Okay. And so, we applied five times over how many years for grants? Over five years?
Probably over...
Three. We applied five times, I'm going to say in three years because there were two different grants that we could apply for at the same time.
Right. In one or two years, we applied both for the DCED and the PennDOT grant. Didn't get either.
And are you kind of insinuating that we would not have gotten this grant had it not been for Senator Mensch?
Senator Mensch played a huge part in it. He was, he was a tremendous help. He came out to the intersection back in 2016, 2017, stood there during a dismissal time in the afternoon. So he saw bus traffic going through the intersection. Todd and I met with Senator Mensch and his staff on a number of occasions, and they called PennDOT. They wrote letters in support of the project. And Senator Mensch, I believe, spoke with PennDOT in June or July when we got this $800,000 grant, and convinced them that this was a grant, you know, worthy of their attention. Part of the appeal to PennDOT was that there were multiple municipalities involved in this. It wasn't just one municipality asking for this money to be spent here. It was the township, the borough, and the school district all interested in this grant.
Okay, so, but we didn't ask him to step in until the other times that we applied for the grant?
No, we did.
We did, okay.
Right from the very beginning, we had involved Senator Mensch. And, you know, we were unsuccessful in four previous attempts.
And I'm assuming your $900 contribution to him at his fundraiser is a joke?
That's right.
Go ahead, Mrs. Deroth.
I was just curious, do you have any idea of what the cost of a light is normally under normal circumstances than other places? Does anybody ever check that out?
I mean, our engineer does. They, they bid, or they estimated blacktop, paint, light, electric, all that stuff. So part of their bid, we could get that for you, just if you just want the cost.
cost.
There was some type of overall figure that normally a lot would cost. Mine's different.
No, I, not that I'm aware. I mean, first of all, if you look at the plan, and I know you don't have the advantage of seeing the plan, but there are, there are lights facing Montgomery Avenue, there are lights facing north on North Reading Avenue, there are lights on a separate standard facing Henry Avenue, and there are lights facing south on North Reading Avenue. So, this was not an easy intersection to signalize with the, the number of different roads coming in at different angles.
Is there a reason the engineer wasn't here tonight?
We didn't ask him to appear.
I was expecting he'd be there.
I didn't think about that, but...
You know, you guys should've probably took the money while we offered it to you.
Can we go back and rethink that?
No.
We should have, but you would've spent eight hundred thousand dollars then, when we're asking you to spend, hopefully, less than five hundred thousand dollars now. So, I mean, it, it's a, it's a better result for the district now than that eight hundred thousand dollars would've been.
I have a question. You, you had mentioned that you're gonna take on the responsibility of maintaining the, the light, the improvements. Is there a general idea of what a cost would be associated with that?
No, and, and we tried to research, we're gonna have to send it out to get a cost estimate from the service that we use for our other two lights that we have in the township. To give you an idea of, of what's involved with the light, well, obviously Jeff had mentioned that it needs insurance, because obviously it's an expensive piece of, of equipment, and it's gonna get hit and tore down and, and stuff like that. We've had to do some upgrades to our other two lights. Wiring goes bad after a while. I mean, the light at Walmart is only less than twenty years old, and we had to do significant upgrades to that light.
A generator.
Yeah, generator hookup, because, and we'll have that hooked in, we'll have that light powered by a generator, so that if, that, we lose power, that that light will still be functioning, because that's gonna be a very important traffic light. The other cost is, is lining the street PennDots with the stop blocks. And, and you think, oh, it's just paint. Right now, paint's one of them commodities that you can't get, the street paint. We have some other areas that we need to paint, and the roadmaster has called around the other municipalities, and, and nobody can get the white paint to do the, the stop blocks right now, there's just none available. So there's that, that has to get done yearly, if not more than that. Another issue that we have at the Walmart light is signage for the lights, they get tore down all the time, and, and we have to replace them. Because PennDOT will come out and inspect us every so often, and it has to maintain PennDOT specs. So we're at the mercy of PennDOT as far as keeping this light working.
So, is it fair to say you have a long-term commitment in this?
Yes. I mean, there's, there's a, there's a monthly electric bill that, that never stops. Now, with, I would assume this new light's gonna be LED, I'm, I'm sure that's in the spec. So hopefully, electric bill isn't huge, but it, it never stops.
Ms. Nyman, had a question, and Mr. Brophy, it looks like you are trying to get into queue with Ms. Nyman first.
Okay, I do have a couple of questions, comments. And listening to you, Mr. Carver, it was my understanding that some of these updates to the road out here on, on Reading Avenue, going down towards the trailer park, is that necessary?
Yeah, in the opinion of the engineers, it was, yeah.
And it was part of PennDOT, wasn't it?
Yeah, right, right. I mean, PennDOT, everything that's on here, PennDOT has either, has required and/or approved. So you see, if we go down toward, in front of the Circle K, there's an, on the second sheet, there's an existing medial strip there that is going to be removed, and, and is going to be replaced by a different type of medial strip. But all of those things that you see there are things that PennDOT required, the left-hand turning lane that you see there on, on that, and then up at Henry Avenue, there's left-hand turning lanes.
Okay, that was just one of my questions. The grant money that was received, or...
We've received it.
Yeah, you've received it. Didn't that account for any of the engineering costs in there?
I don't think so.
No, the engineering costs would've paid.
Yeah. We, we had to submit to, to PennDOT, and I think you'll see it if you look in that application, we had to submit the construction costs. So we had an estimate in there, I think of eight hundred and ninety-some thousand dollars. And that's what went before PennDOT. And they gave us a grant, I think maybe it was eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, or something like that.
Okay, so the grant money was just for the light itself, not...
Construction.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. Um, at a previous board meeting, that was held back, I believe, on August tenth, at the end of the meeting, Mr. Gambler made a statement to myself, and I'm questioning what was meant by that, that the relationship between the township and the district will not be good.
I think that the township would be extremely disappointed if, if we don't get money from the school district to allow us to finish this project. Whether or not we're able to finish the project without the district's help, I don't know. But, I know that, that we view, have viewed ourselves as being, as I said in my presentation, good partners for the school district. You've come to us on a number of your construction projects, and have asked for various kinds of relief, waivers, not having a sprinkler in the entire Junior High West was, was a thing I mentioned. And, and we've agreed to that. And, you know, and we agreed without any thought of any kind of quid pro quo. And I, and we would hope that the, that the district moves forward on this project in that same fashion. We, I, I admit that it was a prior board, it wasn't, most of you who are seated here, seated here tonight, but a prior board clearly committed to this project, and committed to the extent of offering us eight hundred thousand dollars. And we'd like you to honor that commitment, and, and not for Culver Brookdale Township, and not for the Culver Brookdale Township Board of Commissioners. We'd like you to honor that commitment for the safety of your students, our children, who will be going out of the North Monroe Street extension here, turning left, turning right, going out to Henry Avenue. And, and quite honestly, this is almost unbelievable. The last time Senator Mench was up here, in July, we, he came within ten feet of witnessing an accident there at the intersection. So, I mean, that would've been pretty serendipitous, but it, it's, it's not a good intersection, it's not a safe intersection. If you turn more buses, more student cars out through that intersection without making changes, there are gonna be problems. And, and Mrs. Nyman, you were talking about problems with just cars parking here along the road and things like that. Imagine what it is when a school bus has to sit there and go from Montgomery Avenue across Henry Avenue. The bus accelerates, you know how slowly a bus accelerates? Traffic coming up North Reading Avenue without traffic lights, or coming both directions, coming over that little rise from Boyer Town. It's a dangerous situation. So if nothing else, from a student's safety point of view, you should be committed to this project. This is going to make it safer for all of our children, and particularly the students from the high school, who are using that intersection.
Mrs. Deroff, do you have follow-up questions?
First of all, in response, telling us there may be reprisals if we don't go along with this, is not a very good negotiating tactic.
I don't, I don't...
No, you did. So let me stop there. But, I, I don't want to go any further in that one, I just, I just wanna point that out. Secondly, though, we're misrepresenting this entire project. We keep calling a light, calling this a light project. This is a road improvement project, which is a much different project. And, and did the original board agree to a road improvement project, or a light project?
This was an intersection improvement project. And improvements to the intersection involve some road widening, some repaving, and, and primarily a light. I think the light's probably the single biggest aspect of this whole cost thing, but I don't know that for a fact, I don't have the estimate in front of me.
Doesn't look like it's in plan, but that's, that's my opinion.
Okay.
It's just an opinion, not a, not a fact. So, okay.
Again, Mr. Brophy, that wasn't, this isn't our design. We didn't come up with this design, this was something that PennDOT...
Oh, yeah, and I, and I understand, because PennDOT is one of the most frustrating things that we can do.
Okay, alright.
I understand.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a question. Who's gonna be your project manager on this?
Who's gonna be your project manager on this?
I would assume our engineer.
Gilmore.
Gilmore and Associates, yeah. And, and actually, the, the individual has changed. John Sartor has been for a long time our township engineer, John retired, and now it's Josh Hagedorn, but also with Gilmore. So it's still the, Gilmore's office, but a, a different person.
Okay.
And you got, Ms. Deroff, anything else?
Did you have any other follow-up questions, Mrs. Deroff? You're good.
No, I don't think so. I don't know Ms. Nyman's question, but I answered her.
What's that?
She's, Mrs. Deroff is saying she's not sure that Ms. Nyman's question, that she started off with, whether it was answered or not.
Ms. Nyman, did I miss it?
About the relation, about the relationship between the township and the district was stated that it will not be good.
I thought I answered that. I mean, we've, we've, again, we've viewed our, and, and I said, and, and so that there's no confusion, the township would be extremely disappointed if this project doesn't go forward. Especially since we got a grant of eight hundred thousand dollars toward this nine hundred, or eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollar project. I mean, it, it seems to me to be a no-brainer that, that this project has to go forward. So we would be extremely disappointed, I, I, we would be frustrated, to say the least, if that means that our relationship would be damaged. I don't, we're not going to sue you to enforce this, any kind of promise. We're not going to not review plans that you bring before us in the future. We're not gonna not try to be, continue to be, a good partner to the school district in any development plans that, that come forward. So, I don't think that our relationship will be damaged, but it's, it's like any kind of relationship, friendship. Sometimes you get disappointed in a friend, and sometimes things don't work out like you want them to work out. We would be disappointed, we would be frustrated. But, beyond that, I, I, I don't know what I can tell you.
I didn't say that, I was just concerned because we were told that the relationship would not be the same again if we reneged on this project, and I just wanted to make sure that was not the case.
Alright. I, I, I was the one that was, that said it, as, as Ms. Nyman had said. And, and I apologize for saying that. I think I left my emotions get ahead of me. I've put a ton of time in this project, and to see it not go forward would be so devastating, because I believe that this light is needed. And I, we thought that we had it figured out for the school district. We're all taxpayers, and that's why we tried so hard to get that grant. We could've just sat back and said, we're not going, you know, apply for the grant, and that's it. When, when he talks about Senator Mench, we, I hounded him, every fundraiser I saw him at, or any place that I knew he was gonna be at, I tried to attend, to put a bug in his ear. He got tired of seeing me. And it paid off, because I knew we were gonna save money. I, I've missed things, you know, with my family, and, and I missed work over meetings over this traffic light. I, I put a ton of time into it, and, and I did get emotional on it. I, and I do apologize, but you gotta understand that this is seven years in, in the making.
Thank you, Mr. Hemingway. Yeah, first I just, I wanted to thank Mr. Carver and Mr. Gambler for coming out tonight, and for the presentation, and for all your advocacy. You had spoken a lot about how dangerous this intersection could potentially be to students. I was just curious, have there been a great deal of incidents there, or is it near misses?
The chief can answer that question about the safety of the intersection, I think, better than us.
I appreciate it.
Unfortunately, I, I don't have the accident stats close at hand. I didn't research that, I didn't know it was gonna be asked at this meeting. But what I can tell you, just anecdotally from my own experience, is that, to answer your question directly, we don't have a lot of accidents at that intersection. But I can also tell you, anecdotally from my own experience, driving it myself and seeing other drivers, the reason we don't have a lot of accidents there is because people that know the area generally don't try to pull out there. People who go that direction on Montgomery Avenue from here are continuing down Montgomery Avenue and going, either making a left on North Reading at, at the convenience store, or going down to Route one hundred. People are not making the hard left to come out to North Reading Avenue, where they're gonna either turn left to go into Boyer Town, or go straight across on the Henry Avenue. Everybody that knows that intersection avoids doing that, including all the police officers on patrol. Nobody wants to do that. PennDOT knows it too, that's why you're not allowed to use the Monroe Street extension of Montgomery Avenue for left turns. That can only be used for right turns. And, and this traffic light will facilitate getting that opened up to left turns, and that's the reason, because everybody, including PennDOT, knows that there will be accidents there, if people start trying to go straight across to Henry Avenue, or to turn left on the North Reading Avenue to commit to Boyer Town.
So, in your opinion, do you, do you feel that this traffic light would make that intersection safer for the community and for the students?
Oh, absolutely. There's no question about it. And it'll, it'll improve the traffic flow for the whole area, Montgomery Avenue, the other side of the schools, and the borough of Boyer Town, the whole area that encircles the high school, Culverdale Elementary, this building, it'll improve the traffic flow, because people will be able to make that complete circle without the impediment of having to try to figure out how to get around that intersection.
Okay. I appreciate it, thank you.
Sure. Okay, I would like to thank Mr. Gambler, Mr. Carver, also for being here and answering questions. Thank you, sir.
Our pleasure.
Thank you. Mr. Saltanic, would you like to make any final statements, or finish up, or...
The board will be reviewing the situation, and Lauren Chesney will be back in touch with you regarding our next steps.
Okay. And, and again, I know that there was a, a fair amount of conversation about timing of this thing. If the timing turns out to be terrible, we have no qualms about pushing it back. We'd like to have an understanding with you, so that when we do go forward, whether it's two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, or whether it's twenty-two, twenty-three, we'd like to have an understanding as to what the extent of your contribution would be, so that we're not in this boat next summer. But, you know, let's wait and see what the, what the bids come back in, and, and if it's, if they're much higher than we anticipate, or much higher than we wanna pay, we have no qualms rejecting the bids and, and rebidding the project. We've done that in other situations. Okay? Thank you for your time.
On behalf of the board, thank you.
Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you both.
Mr. Hemingway, we will move to the next subject, which is Policy Two Fourteen, Class Rank. We're bringing to, forward to the board for discussion another policy. It is, in addition to, or, or it is separate from the ones that we will be voting on as a final reading, it is in conjunction with our program of study, and something that we believe will be very beneficial for all of our students. And I'm going to give Mr. Stout the opportunity to speak to this policy, as he has been doing the work on it with our high school administration. Mr. Stout?
Thank you, Mrs. Torscha. Yes, you are correct, and I believe the board was introduced to this concept last year when we introduced our program of study. So I'm gonna read some specifics. There's two, there's two elements to this policy that I want everyone to make sure they understand. The policy change will really be for this year's freshman class, correct, Dr. Foley? For the class of two thousand and twenty-five. So when I talk about the first part of the policy, that's for the class of two thousand and twenty-five, which is the ninth grade class. For the class of two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, and two thousand twenty-four, it'll be status quo for those processes. So, when I go through, I just wanna make sure everybody's clear for that. So, beginning with the class of two thousand and twenty-five, the update to Policy Two Fourteen authorizes a system of class rank reported in deciles, calculated by grade point average for students in grades nine through twelve. A student's grade point average and rank by decile shall be entered on the student's record and transcripts, and shall be subject to board policy on release of student records. A student's numeric rank by grade point average will only be computed for the purposes of admission to higher education, or the awarding of financial aid when required by the requesting institution. The terms valedictorian and salutatorian will be replaced with the Latin model for recognizing a student's outstanding academic achievement as documented below. And these are the three levels that I want everybody to really focus on. Students who graduated with a weighted cumulative GPA of three point oh to three point six six are designated... Students who graduated with a weighted cumulative GPA of 3.0 to 3.66 are designated as cumulati, which means with praise. Students who graduate with a weighted cumulative GPA of 3.667 to 4.199 are designated as magna cum laude, which means with great praise. And finally, students who graduate with a weighted cumulative GPA of 4.2 or higher are designated as summa cum laude, which means with highest praise. And I'd like to reiterate, that is for the class of 2025 and beyond. Continuing for the classes of 2022, 2023, and 2024, we will continue to report class rank grade point average. Also, that has been past practice, a student's grade point average and numeric rank in class shall be entered on the student's record and transcripts and shall be subject to board policy on release of student records. I wanted to be noted that in all cases, it should be noted that class rank shall be computed by the final grades in all subjects which credit is awarded during the students' enrollments in grades nine through 12. Credits earned in middle school or outside the school building will be accepted for credit but not counted towards GPA or class rank. We will continue to make a fair and reasonable manner for calculating GPA, average, or class rank for those students transferring into the district after their freshman year of high school. So that basically is an overview of our changes for Policy 214.
I do want to add that this policy has been reviewed by Mr. Saltanic's office, and is, they feel confident in what we are presenting today. So all we're looking for, we're not looking for a vote, we're just sharing with you that we're going to move this forward to a first reading at the next board meeting, and if you have any questions about it, now would be the time.
And Dr. Foley's with us tonight as well.
So there are several other districts that are going with this. Basically, what you're saying is you're kind of doing away with the salutatorian and valedictorian distinction, and I'm just curious what the motivation is to do that? Is there a reason that school districts, including ours, are looking to move away from that and going with this? I don't have an opinion either way. I'm just curious with the rationale.
One of the biggest reasons that we find that this is very successful is students are now going to be taking classes for the sheer of learning and where I need to go in my future, as opposed to if I get this one extra point, then that'll put me in a different place in rank. So it's not necessarily motivated entirely by learning.
I just wanted to say that, you know, with my, with my sons, I found it very competitive, you know, that ranking up there in the, in the top echelons, and it kind of seemed too much stress for, for something, you know, that, to get that valedictorian or the salutatorian. So I, I look forward to seeing this.
Dr. Foley and I have been in many conversations over that topic, and you are correct, and to Dr. Foley's point earlier, it seems like sometimes people are taking courses for the GPA and the bumps rather than for the love of the learning of whatever is transpiring in that course.
And also, just so you understand, for the last several years, we've had to go out five or six decimal points to decide that factor. I mean, that's splitting a hair.
Yeah, Mr. Foose, I'm sorry.
I had the pleasure of speaking to Mr. Stout about this already, so some of the questions will be repeat from our previous conversation. But one question, and just for public consumption, one question I had was, so we have a general idea of a lot of the universities and institutions that people typically will apply to, like where most Boerertown students wind up going. Do we have a pretty good, are we fairly comfortable that the effort needed to calculate for anybody who would need, who would need it calculated would be pretty minimal, or do we think that would be a hidden factor of work?
Yeah, we've researched that, and it appears that, and that's why we have the policy for, I'd have to look here, when required by a requesting institution, we have the ability to calculate that, but it does seem like that's a lesser of a, of a need in today's times. But we wanted to make sure we had that little caveat in there to support that if the requesting institution asks for that.
Yeah, because like we discussed, I mean, I think a lot of schools moved away from that. The other question that I had was just for our graduation ceremony. How about we determine speakers? Traditionally, we've had the valedictorian and salutatorian speak.
This is very exciting for me because at a prior, my prior school, when I was at, we did this, and it opens the door for people to audition for speeches, which is very, I think it's a much better system than you automatically get it. In fact, we had one student this year purposely bomb an exam so that they would not have to give the speech at graduation, so they ended up three instead of two or one. So there's a lot of different pressures there. The point is, is we have a great system that's going to be in place for students to be selected and audition for speaking.
And this will be, this is the first, will be brought to first reading?
It would be brought to first reading at the October 26th meeting.
Yeah, and our goal, Mr. Hemingway, just so you know, too, in the weekly, I updated kind of the next few meetings that we were actually going to be talking about some academic things, and I'm super excited about that. And one of the, the highlights of the year is to really talk about the program of study, and the program of study will be looked for board approval that, that second meeting in November, and our goal was to have this correspond with that timing as well.
Okay, fantastic. And it looks like you're up, so can we just move right into Portrait of a Graduate with this? Dr. Foley, thank you.
Thank you.
Making sure the microphone's on. I was, I was sincerely very, I was serious about making the comment about being able to talk about some academic and instructional things within our districts. Hold on, there we go. And I appreciate the opportunity for us to present a lot of hard work that's happened behind the scenes to help support building our Portrait of a Graduate and trying to work towards what's the instructional model, what are the techniques that are going to help support our graduating students? And that starts, I mean, everybody here, I think, is well aware that we have our pre-K program, and we have three full-time pre-K classes all the way up through grade 12. So if I'm calculating that correctly, we're talking, there's some students that'll go through our school for 14 years before they actually graduate. So what happens in that pre-K program for our students can be equally as important as we move up through the grades and get to 12th grade and have our graduates. So it's a nice talking point about how we're looking at our graduates with the Policy 214 and then moving forward with our work that's going to be presented to you tonight. So I am thrilled to have aside me tonight the esteemed Dr. Obero. She is our Director of Teaching and Learning, and I can't say enough about the Office of Teaching and Learning and the hard work that happens. I know we get hung up in a lot of the logistics of what happens in our classrooms, and, you know, I hate to say masks, no masks, and all those kinds of conversations, but we are having to charge forward to present academic opportunities for our kids that maximize the time while they're in school. So it's imperative for us to continue moving forward to help support our kids and be very reflective and responsive to what our needs are. So you will see tonight in our Portrait of a Graduate instructional model presentation some of the work that's taking place. Just reminding everyone, over the past couple of years, we worked diligently on our comprehensive plan. In our comprehensive plan, we worked on our vision, mission, and goals, and as we remind ourselves each day that we focus on these goals to make sure it helps to move us forward in making decisions to meet the needs of our students. Our goals this year, looking at where we, where we started in August, I'm having a hard time believing that we are truly in the second week of October, and we're talking about, you know, Thanksgiving is a little more than a, than a month away, but time is really moving quickly. So our goals this year were really to study the past, to understand the present, to plan for the future, to make sure all of our students are future-ready. And future-ready, as we have learned in this pandemic, looks different than it did just mere two years ago. Prioritizing student learning, the growth and achievement of our students, we know that we've had to adapt, modify, and support students in different ways than we ever have had to in the past. And also prioritizing staff collaboration, and Dr. Obero is going to talk about professional learning communities a little bit later, and how we support each other in this process. Because as we know, we think back to last summer when we made that decision to go virtual for that first month of school, to where we are here in almost the end of our first quarter of the next year, what we've learned and how we've adapted along the way. The word that I want everyone to be thinking about, and as we move forward, is really just thinking of the impact. And a lot of the information that we're going to present tonight has the word "impact" behind the scenes, and we think about the impact that the work that we're doing to support our students and how we are doing, going to build our successful students for the future. Impact is going to be a critical term that hopefully is embedded in your mind before you leave here tonight.
Okay, so the work that has started thus far and will continue into the next few years throughout our school districts is really moving forward to articulate our Portrait of a Graduate and our instructional model. As they work in tandem, the instructional model will allow us to reach and achieve the goals of the Portrait of a Graduate. So you can see in this graphic that our Allison Moyer, our communication specialist, has put together with the support of our team. You can see our bear logo there with the graduation cap on top of his head, and then what are the three main components of this Portrait of a Graduate? It's real-world knowledge, the composition of character, and social-emotional awareness. And how did we reach those three main components? That was through stakeholder input of our steering team that began this work, extending out to all of our teachers and administrators in the district to get their input, expanding out to all the parents and community members who chose to give input on that, and now we are also sharing this information with our students, especially at the secondary level, to get their input on how can we best support them in each one of these areas. Additionally, our instructional model has four main components: a positive learning environment, life-ready learning, knowing that we need to prepare our students for the future, as Mr. Stout shared, responsive instructional practices to make sure that we are really responding to the needs of the students in our classrooms and supporting their growth toward the future, and then having learner-centered schools, really looking at our data, looking at what we know about our students, and supporting them as we move forward, as they can leave our schools, as meeting that Portrait of a Graduate and making a positive impact on the world around them. Now, we have a little video. It's about three minutes long, and it really has been the compelling why behind some of this work. It is the future of work. We're going to ask you to share out your response to this video after we're finished. There's a little interaction here. What resonates with you in this video? What do you think is missing? We're not saying this is all-inclusive. We think there are maybe some things missing. We're going to ask you to share that out. And what is behind the scenes? What does this show or not show about how we must prepare our students for the future? It just takes a moment to load.
So it's Dr. Obero, this is the, this is the interactive part of the presentation. So we just want to ask you in general, is there anything that truly resonated with you from the video? Anything that's missing from the video, or what's behind the scenes? And we just wanted to kind of put it out there if there's any kind of comments that any of the board members wanted to make. Go ahead.
I think, I mean, we see the pace of technology, the way things are changing, the advancements, the ways that it can help improve lives in countless ways, but there's so much that we need to consider about the ethics of it, especially like at the end with the Boston Dynamics, because what those robots are capable of paired with artificial intelligence, there are some really scary thoughts that come along with some of that. There are some amazing things that the people can be freed, freed up to do with their time to pursue other things. I think that we could see a great renaissance in art and creativity. There's also medical advances that I think could dramatically change and improve people's lives, but there are a lot of really deep conversations and thoughts that need to be had about what is too far, and I know that a lot of that's taking place, but I think that's, that's part of what I'm sure we'll be discussing about what we need to prepare our students for as well.
Thank you.
I was wondering where robotic bus drivers are.
You know what? That, you have something. You have something there, because, oh my goodness. Yeah, with the robotic 18-wheeler.
That could solve a lot of problems.
Well, Elon Musk is working on that very aggressively. And actually, actually, if you really look at that issue very carefully, that a number of the major transportation entities, including Amazon and FedEx, are looking into driverless deliveries right now because of the same issue. I don't think it will be probably, will be less than five years from now that we're going to be addressing that as a viable alternative.
I was just kidding.
No, no. I got to tell you, it's, 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 it's actually, it's not a joke, actually. There is a lot of, a lot of AI research is going into that issue, and the real consequence of that issue in the long term is if we're going to end up replacing that portion of the workforce, even though it has shrunk because we can't find them, where are those individuals going to go in the economy to address those issues?
I want to see that robot.
It's not, you won't see it.
Okay, so I just wanted to point you in the direction of where you can dig deeper into the portrait of a graduate and the instructional model. This is all posted on our website in the graphics, really for space and also to reduce clutter. We just put the big ideas of each one of these models. But if you go to our district website, my link didn't work, hang on. Now it did. If you go to our district website, right under the district tab, you'll be able to scroll down right here to the third item is the impact, the BASD's impact, our instructional model and portrait of a graduate. And you can read the background of our portrait of a graduate. You can see that initial graphic. And then as you scroll down, you'll see each piece of that graphic identified. And then under each one, you'll see some main key vocabulary, key content that our stakeholders have identified as priorities in our district. Now, we know there's a lot of real-world knowledge that's important for our students. But across the board, especially in this one area, it was super exciting to see our teachers, our administrators, and the community and parents came up with these four areas as our main priorities under that idea of real-world knowledge. We want students to leave having an awareness of careers, that strong content knowledge is still a key piece of the work that we do each and every day. Digital literacy, we know that's going to be very important, and financial literacy. So they would leave, having those skills and competencies very strong. I'm not going to read each one of these, but as we scroll down through, you can see under SEL, communications, critical thinking, the development of empathy, and cultural literacy were the four main ideas. Under the composition of character, integrity, being a lifelong learner, kindness, and resilience, which we certainly have built throughout this pandemic, are the main pieces of our portrait of a graduate. And likewise, if you click on the instructional model, this one's a little bit different. If you click on each one of the components, it will take you to a slide deck, and you can scroll through each one. So there's positive learning environment, which looks like dignity honored, safe and supportive environment, and social emotional learning. And then each one of those is broken down into broader definitions. And there's life-ready learning, transferable goals, responsive instructional practices, and last but not least, learner-centered schools. So that is a reference there that you can refer to at any time.
And in the weekly update for the past, I know it seems redundant, I don't take it out, but it's been in there for the past like two months, but you have been given links to this information. But just to piggyback on what Dr. Obarrow was speaking to, the initial steps to support our students are really prioritizing 21st century skills. The two main types are the four Cs, five Cs of 21st century learning. It's creativity, collaboration, communication, critical, and computational thinking are key components to that. Other sometimes included our citizenship and career readiness. And then, this is a big one. I think I made reference to the school board a couple times, but a lot of people talk about soft skills and those skills that we teach our students to really be successful, that that's really what sometimes we forget about. We've redefined them as calling them impact skills, and we go back to that term impact. Those are those specific skills that students will be successful with job interviews, with social interactions, with those kinds of components that we sometimes forget that we need to remind that's important. If you don't do well in the job interview, but you have all of the cognitive capacity to have the job, you're probably not going to move forward in that interview process. So the SEL skills, which are social emotional learning skills that go along with that, as well as our life-ready skills. So our professional learning responsibilities and priorities moving forward for the 21-22 school year and beyond, as we have incredibly had to pivot back on March 13th in 2020, the focus on blended learning strategies has been an absolute imperative component to how we move forward with our instructional practices and its purposeful integration of technology into instruction and assessment practices, making sure that we have that built into what our daily practices are, knowing what effective instructional strategies are, but also blending the virtual components along with that. And next is really, Dr. Obarrow made reference to this in one of the previous slides, creating and strengthening our learner center culture. It is all about our students. It's all about what we can do to help support our students to move forward. And all of the terms that are up there, from differentiation to assessment practices, SEL, climate culture, trauma-informed practices, which you had heard about from Mr. Schmaldin and Dr. Horton, last board meeting, this piggybacks that work. And again, I emphasize the fact, I'm excited that we're having conversations about what kinds of good practices are happening in our classrooms. So learner-centered culture is critical to help support our successful students. And finally, Dr. Obarrow is going to talk about this, is integrating professional learning communities. We understand and research supports the fact that we learn from one another. And those professional learning communities across all levels and the collaboration that goes along with that is critical to the process. And Dr. Obarrow is going to talk about how we've integrated those into our practices this year.
So as Mr. Stott shared, these three bullets are our main focus around professional learning to support our staff so they can fully understand the portrait of a graduate and instructional model, and then can collaborate together to move our students forward. We're calling these impact PLCs. There's that impact word again, because PLCs are a well-researched and impactful way to help our staff reach the goals of the portrait of a graduate and instructional model. What we want to do is really, like we talked earlier, to consider the past, to study what we're doing right now, and to learn as we move forward. So we're going to revisit the practices that we're currently using and that we were using prior to the pandemic and ensure that we are maximizing our time together as we work collaboratively to best support our students. I love this little box here that says, alone we are smart, together we are brilliant. And that just capitalizes on the need to not work in silos in education, but really to work and support one another. So each one of our school administrators has identified a time within their schedule where teams can get together, whether that's grade-level teams or department teams can get together to dig into and spend some time focusing on for the 2021-2022 school year, the key bulleted items there that is focusing on teacher understanding of what are the elements of that instructional model and portrait of a graduate, to develop their team norms and collaboration protocols to make sure that that time is used well, and then also to adopt some consistent reflection questions. And a key part of that is also starting to think about what is that first action step that we can do as a team to start to bring this to fruition.
Dr. Obarrow, for the non-educators in the room?
Yes.
Would you clarify what a PLC is perhaps?
Sure, I'm sorry. A PLC stands for professional learning community. I'm sorry, I didn't say that earlier. But it's a team of professionals coming together to really focus in on student learning and student growth. Sure. We do have a multi-year plan for the PLCs. We want this to grow over time, but we also want to make it manageable for our staff as they're balancing many responsibilities. So we're going to continue to focus that time for PLCs in the next, over the next three years, but we're going to change that focus a little bit. And in 22-23, we're going to dig into looking at the curriculum and developing visions and goals for departments and grade levels, and then also look at aligning assessments and curriculum with the instructional model and the portrait of a graduate. So the first year, it's really getting to know, thinking, reflecting, how does this all work together? And then we're going to start thinking about how do we bring this into the work that we are already doing? And then 23 and 24, making it broader, really looking at student data and work and student learning, and are we seeing that alignment in the curriculum and instruction and the student growth and learning?
So we did work with our multiple groups, like Dr. Obarrow made reference to, into our dig into the BSD portrait of a graduate and instructional model work. And we were looking for evidence with respect to 21st century classrooms, the four Cs and five Cs, and like we spoke about before, those impact skills, the SEL skills, those soft skills, life skills and career skills. And we came up with, this is a Wordle, if I'm not mistaken. So what's really cool is we have a website that you can go into, and people type in words that are impactful based upon whatever their learning might be. And this is a strategy that a lot of teachers use. And what's, what's cool about this is that the words that are most frequently utilized pop, and they get bigger, they get in different colors. So you can see all of the evidence of 21st century skills that some of our teams that worked on this summer came up with. And you certainly see some of the terms that we made reference to in this, in this presentation. And finally, I go back to what we kind of kicked off our presentation talking about. It's the impact. It's the impact of the work that we do to help support our students. And I look at the portrait of a graduate and the instructional model. We think about where do we want our students to be with the portrait of a graduate, but the instructional model is really kind of that critical work to help get kids where we want them to be when they graduate. So I believe that was our last, our last slide, and open for any comments or questions about either one of our concepts. Yeah, Mrs. Denon.
Yeah, this is really exciting, and it's really great. About five or six years ago, I went to one of the trainings that PSBA had, and one of the modules was developing a portrait of a graduate. And it was really kind of a new concept. And some of the words that we have are in with theirs. And this is even, this is even more detailed than what they did. They, a lot of it, they were just presenting examples of just like a quick paragraph. And I think this kind of includes a lot more than whittling it down to like five words that we want our graduates to do. So I think we've, we've taken the concept, but we've, we've made it work even better. And I love the idea of the PLCs. I do think years ago, we, Boyer Town started doing, doing that, and I'm glad we're going to continue to do that, where you might have, I remember like in middle school at one point where the kids were doing an English project that had to do with science, that then had to do with the history, and it all kind of came together. And I thought that was really cool. And so I think it's, this is just such a positive thing for our district. And I'm also really happy to see the financial literacy part, because that is something that parents and I actually, you know, always said, we need to do more, more. And we're doing a really good job, I think we are. We do have a good financial literacy program, but the fact that we're really going to concentrate on it, and that's going to be something that we're going to do, I'm really excited to see. So thank you for all your hard work. This is really awesome.
And just to, and thank you for that comment. Just to piggyback what was in the weekly this past week, we are looking at, and I believe the next or two meetings we're going to do, the BSD Virtual Academy, we're going to do an elementary presentation and a secondary presentation. And then in November, we're also going to do the program of study, which is, again, how it all kind of comes together in practice. So we're excited over the next couple of months to really share out what some of the really hard work that's happening behind the scenes to support students. Mr. Fu.
This is not an easy question, and I don't expect an answer right now. One, one issue I had when I even, when I first got involved with the school board was trying to think about how focused things seem to be previously on measures like SAT scores and class rank and how we, how we measure up against others on niche.com and places like that. And there are tangible things and like things that you can actually quantify that I don't know that they really tell you much about, how 20 years after graduating, somebody is doing, how well we prepared them for life and to be a contributing part of a community. I like this much better, but I'm curious, how are we going to measure success?
So I can, I can give you a little piece of insight, and I think this will grow over the next few years. This is kind of the starting place, and as we're going to work together with our teams to, the first thing we're going to do is work together with elementary, secondary, elementary, middle school, and high school teams to identify what are look-for's. So in elementary, we know the look-for's around real-world knowledge are going to be different than the look-for's around, let's just use financial literacy. What does financial literacy look like in elementary is going to be a little bit different than what that looks like in middle school than what that looks like in high school. So we're going to start to establish what are those look-for's? Where do we already embed pieces? Within our Smart Futures, which is our career readiness software, there are some pieces around entrepreneurship and budgeting and things like that that our fifth graders are exposed to. So we have an element of that within fifth grade. But where else can we start to embed that language, those concepts in the elementary level? And then how do we systemically look for vertical alignment of that? Then once they move into middle school, how do we kind of ramp that up a little bit more? So when we get to high school, they're ready for what is in place there and making sure we don't have any gaps. So identifying those look-for's, and then where in our curriculum and where in our classrooms will those pieces be tapped into is that first step of this, of this. And then when you think about those professional learning communities, as we start to look at our curriculum and those instructional practices, making sure that they are embedded within those pieces as well.
And we do, Mr. Fu, just to, we, you know, what defines a successful student? I mean, that's very qualitative, perhaps depending on what your opinion is. So we do collect data of our graduates to really continue to monitor what kids do once they graduate. So to your point of, you know, successful or whatever that is, it's kind of a qualitative concept, because what's successful to you might be different than what, you know, I might or what Dr. Obarrow might. So we do try to quantify the statistics that come in, but some of it is just perceptive based upon what, you know, people are actually doing. Mrs. McWhorter.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for the presentation and all the hard work that you've obviously done to get to this point. I was just, I really liked the idea of the professional learning communities. And did we have something like that prior to this? And what was that?
We did a few years back, and we called them professional learning communities. They were framed a little bit differently, and they were not necessarily as consistent. We used to identify at the elementary level two PLC days, where different grade-level teams could get some sub-coverage and, and focus on whether it was a building action plan or things that they needed to work together collaboratively on. But what we really wanted to be was consistent and really embed this. So it was ongoing conversation and an ongoing focus, because, you know, what we put our time to and our energy and our resources to is ultimately where we're going to see growth. So we, this is a little bit more systemic across K to 12 and making sure that that time is there.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, guys. That was great.
Thank you.
We look forward to the weeks to come. I understand we've got more to come, waiting to see. All right, everybody, we've come up on, going on three hours of some meeting time. Everybody, just want to check in, everyone okay? Do you mind if I stand for a second? Can we just take a two-minute stand break?
Would you like me to roll through the consent agenda?
No.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Yeah. All right, thank you, Ms. Torsha.
No problem. Next, we have the superintendent's consent agenda, and I would be asking the Board of School Directors to approve the consent agendas presented. Tonight, we will be seeking the second reading and approval of the following policies, 218-
I was just, I really liked the idea of the professional learning communities. And did we have something like that prior to this? And what was that?
We did a few years back and we called them professional learning communities. They were framed a little bit differently and they were not necessarily as consistent. We used to identify at the elementary level two PLC days where different grade level teams could get some sub-coverage and, and focus on whether it was a building action plan or things that they needed to work together collaboratively on. But what we really wanted to be was consistent and really embed this. So it was ongoing conversation and an ongoing focus because, you know, what we put our time to and our energy and our resources to is ultimately where we're going to see growths. So we, this is a little bit more systemic across K to 12 and making sure that that time is there.
Thank you.
All right, thanks guys. That was great.
Thank you.
We look forward to the, the weeks to come. I understand we've got more to come, waiting to see. All right, everybody. We've come up on, going on three hours of some meeting time. Everyone, just want to check in, everyone okay? Do you mind if I stand for a second? Can we just take a two-minute stand break?
Would you like me to roll through the consent agenda?
No.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Ms. Torsia.
No problem. Next, we have the superintendent's consent agenda and I would be asking the Board of School Directors to approve the consent agendas presented. Tonight, we will be seeking the second reading and approval of the following policies. 218.1 Weapons, 218.2 Terroristic Threats, 236.1 Threat Assessment, 247.1 Hazing, 249. Bullying, Cyberbullying, 252. Dating Violence, 805. Emergency Preparedness, and the last one is policy 805.2 School Security Personnel. Again, the recommended action would be that the Board of School Directors approves the consent agenda as presented.
Nyman moves.
Okay, I heard Ms. Nyman, I believe. Okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Dieroff and Mr. Updegrove's second consent. So we go right to a vote.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. McWhorter?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next would be the personnel part of the superintendent's itemized agenda. And I would be asking that the Board of School Directors approves the personnel agenda items as presented.
Nyman moves. McWhorter seconds.
Okay, Ms. Nyman and I saw Mr. Updegrove's hand, so he's second. Any questions or comments? And Ms. Nyman?
If we say no, can we keep Awida?
I wish we could.
Okay, let's go to a vote, please.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. McWhorter?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes, since you told me it won't work.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And Mr. Updegrove, before I do complete the superintendent's report, I just wanted to mention to everyone, and I know that many of you probably haven't had the opportunity yet to see the latest Let's Talk Tuesday edition that did go out today. I'm quite proud of the additions that are put together by my communication specialist, Mrs. Allison Moyer and, and myself. And I just wanted to point something out. Each, each letter, we do try, or I do try to send out a communication and just, you know, talking to our families, you know, really kind of rounding up what our Let's Talk Tuesday is about. And we do try to capture our students in, in many, many ways in what they're doing throughout the school district. And I'm not going to read the whole letter, but I do want to highlight one section of the letter and I'm going to read it, you know, for everyone. So I just wanted to share that as the superintendent of our school district, I have been asked to put out statements about what I stand for. My opinions do not matter. It is the action that counts. It's not what I stand for, but instead who I stand with. And I proudly stand with our students like those featured here today. There's no room for hate, not in our classrooms, sports arenas or community. The recent vandalism in our schools and community is upsetting, makes us angry, even establishes our own inner hate, but these responses only continue to admire the problem. Kindness, respect and dignity are the things that will make a difference and the positive actions of our students speak volumes. And as you look through this letter this week, you're going to see so many great things that our students are doing throughout our school district. And I just want to be able to, you speak to, to the, the work that they're doing and, you support them. And I know it's difficult. I know we're out there and we're wearing masks and it's not fun for all of us sitting here. And it's, it's, you know, just as, it's 10 times more difficult for them as they're in their classroom, but, but they're doing it and they're, they're doing it with, you know, great dignity and, and they're just pleased to be in school. And I just wanted to, to be able to, you know, share with all of you that, you know, it's a difficult time for all of us and we recognize it, but we're all doing what we need to do to move forward. So that completes my report. Mr. Hemingway, next would be, I believe, our committee reports.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Torsia. Just wanted to touch base with our, our committee liaisons. Ms. Denon?
Sure. This is just a, a short report from the BCIU. We basically did a lot of approvals of the Head Start program, including information, informal and informational reports and the Berks County, Berks County Head Start Annual Report. We also ratified a number of agreements with the Berks County Schools to provide, for the IU to provide Title II services to non-public schools and also referred an agreement with Boyertown for the IU to provide services related to the design and implementation of professional learning pathways. In addition, we did approve numerous other agreements between the Berks County Public Schools and some of our non-public schools where we're supporting them in different developmental programs, including technology and, and some transportation services. Also, this month, there was an update, the September Legislative Report that is always shared with the IU. And some of the highlights basically included some of the information on vaccines and what is the plan going to be for public schools going forward. And as, at this point, there really is, it doesn't really affect public schools in terms of mandating vaccines. We're waiting for a ruling from the federal government in terms of what those specific rules are going to be. But for now, there is, there is no mandate and there is no, the, the, school districts like ours are, are not being forced to either force our teachers to get vaccinated or get, get testing. The, the basic takeaway was that we just have to keep informed about what's going on at both the state and the federal level. At the state level, the budget, budgeting at the state level, there was good news to date. Revenue that collected was 132 million or 2.6 million more than the estimate for this, to date, so that is good. And then the last update was the charter reform program, charter reform legislation, I should say, House Bill 272 addresses charter funding and a bunch of other reforms. And they always give us an update on that because I know it is really important to our school districts in terms of the immense amount of dollars that we have been forced to spend over the past two years on cyber schools. And, you know, the legislature is, they, they, they do have a comprehensive bill out there, but realistically, it, it probably isn't going to go anywhere this, this session. But they did give us a, a report on it, so I just wanted to share it with, with all of you. And that was the report for the IU.
Thank you very much. Mr. Updegrove from PCTC?
I have no report.
Mr. Foose, anything to add? It seems like we had presentation, but I just wanted to see if there's anything.
Yeah, we had that wonderful presentation and Mr. Stout spoke to some of the upcoming presentations, so there, there is obviously more to come. And I just wanted to, to highlight that when he gave me a call for our committee meeting, he had some extra pep in his step and was very excited to be discussing educating our students. And I greatly appreciated that and look forward to, to everything that they have to present to us.
Ms. Dieroff, anything for facilities? Ms. Dieroff, I'm going to ask for you to repeat that again if you could push the, your mic wasn't on. Would you mind repeating?
I am very sorry. I do not have a report. I am waiting for information that is supposed to be forthcoming. As soon as I have that information, I will have a report for you. I apologize.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brophy?
I believe the finance report, the highlight of that is, and Ms. Denon can probably give the numbers on this, is I believe we're up to like 240 kids back in the, in the, our own personal virtual academy, which is a higher number than we originally anticipated or close to around what we were looking for.
Mr. Stout could confirm that number, but that's approximately how many have returned.
So we are, we are seeing the, the savings that we were hoping, I shouldn't say hoping, that you predicted. We would see.
Correct.
So it's very good. That's, that's good. That's, that's a real big positive for the finance world of the district and just keep up the good work. Thank you.
Okay, as far as policies, we do, we did vote on some policies and discuss some, so more to come for that. It's going to lead us to board comments. Ms. Dieroff, I want to start with you and, and I'm just going to randomly choose around the room. So Ms. Dieroff?
I don't have any comments tonight. Thank you.
Ms. McWhorter?
Yeah, I have a couple of thoughts that I want to share. I really appreciated the Let's Talk Tuesdays, the, what the students did at Earl that you showed with their food drive. And then the cross-country team supporting the, the Be Strong Fall Frolic, I think that what it was, that's what it was. So it was good to see, there were a lot of other things too, but those were two things that I mentioned. And I also just wanted to mention, I guess like to say a few words about what's happened recently in our community. The defacing, mainly the defacing of the No Place for Hate mural at Rita's, which was done by our students and our teachers. So it's directly, and it's, you know, part of the No Place for Hate program that we have had here in the past. So it's directly related to the school. And I don't think we're a hateful community. I don't think that we, we try and, and do that. But it was very sad to see that being defaced. And I just wish that we could say something about that and make a statement as a, as a board. Because this isn't something I want to see in our community, coming to our, into our community, that, that type of hatefulness. And it's, it's just, it's, it's upsetting and I think we're better than that. And I, I wish we could make a statement to that effect. You know, if we don't do it, what will happen next and what has to happen to make us, make a statement by that as, as more things happen? That's it. Thank you.
We're going to have a crisscross to Ms. Nyman. Mr. Foose?
Yeah, similarly, I was pretty sad to see the defacing of that mural for a number of reasons. It was the most recent in a string of events that have happened in our community. And so I, I hope that it's not a pattern that's developing. The defacing of that mural clearly had some intent. I, I think there, there's obviously an ongoing criminal investigation, but the, the intent, regardless of who committed that, was to intimidate people and largely people of a diverse community. I, I think it's clear from looking at how it was tagged based on who took credit for this. If you, if you familiarize yourself with, with what they put out, the, the statements they put out, it's not anything that, that I think should be welcomed here. I think that we're a, we're a community that, that seeks diversity, that we seek inclusion. We've moved very far from some of the skeletons of our past that unfortunately still linger. And that is why there is a continued need for the No Place for Hate program. There's a continued need for us to have reminders of that in our school and, and in the community. And that's what that was intended to be. That was a coming, that was a coming together of students, staff and the community. And it's something that is very visible and very prominent and it's been here for a long time. And so there was clearly intent there in, in the defacing of that. I think that as board members, we are community leaders and we have, I, I personally feel an obligation as a, as a board member to speak out about these types of things, that they're not, they're not acceptable, they're not welcome here. And we're a community that will come together to rise above these types of actions. I also think that it's important that we consider our words and actions as community leaders. And anybody seeking office that wants to be a part of this board ought to be considering how their words and actions are, are viewed by people, not only in this community, but around this community, who might perpetrate these types of actions. Why did somebody feel that this was an appropriate thing to do? I, I, I hope that we can stand together as community leaders and say, that is not welcome here. We are in fact in No Place for Hate and will continue to be. And I hope that that mural is fully restored and continues to be supported by this community.
I guess we'll jump over, crossover to Lisa. Ms. Hogan?
Thank you, Mr. Hemingway. Due to the late hour, I'm just, I'm going to reserve my comments until next meeting. Thank you.
Ms. Denon?
I, I just really want to thank Mrs. Torsia for, for saying what she did tonight. I think it is, it is absolutely important that, and imperative that in light of what happened this week, that we as school leaders reiterate that, that we're not going to, we're not going to stand for this, we're not going to accept this type of behavior in our community. And more importantly, it's not who we are. We have really awesome students and they do really, really great things. And we should be highlighting what they are doing and the great things that, that they are doing. And I, I hate that we're, I hate, I shouldn't say that word. I don't like and I'm disappointed that we have to put a, a light on the vandalism at, on the mural when they're, when the bulk of our community are, are standing with the No Place for Hate symbols in our community. My fear is that when we don't speak out and when we don't make a stink about this, is that, that the bubbling of those few under the surface, it starts to come out. And I think that's what we're seeing. I think there have been incidences in this community in the past six months to a year and these things, these, the, the people who, who believe in, in, you know, whether they're racist or homophobic or whatever, they're being emboldened to come out. And I think we, just like we did 20 years ago, when the KKK was marching on, you know, marching in Boyertown or 25 years ago, this community came together. And we came together not just as a community of, of, you know, generational people, but, and parents, but as a school district. And it was the school and the school leaders that brought the No Place for Hate. So I do think we have a responsibility to speak out and to, to make sure that this does not happen again in our community. But I do want to reiterate that the overwhelming majority of people in this community, I think, are accepting. I think they want what's best for their children and they are contributing members to our community.
Just go with, Mr. Brophy, everybody? Should I go to Mr. Updegrove? Mr. Updegrove? Okay, Mr. Brophy?
It's a late hour, I'm going to pass.
Go ahead, Ms. Dieroff.
I realize what everybody's saying, but the more we recognize this and talk about it, the media gets hold of it, the more it's going to spread. If the media would stay out of it, this wouldn't be so terrible as it is. It was a terrible thing that happened and we should just leave it alone. The other thing I'd like to say is, has everybody gotten, gotten in their clarities yet? I don't think they have because there's a couple I'm waiting to see. I don't think all the clarities are in. I wonder when they're going to have to be in. Just a question. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Torsia, we're going to move to announcements.
Our upcoming meetings will, can be found on our website, but we do have an October 26th Board of School Directors meeting at seven o'clock here at the Boyertown Area School District Education Center. We will have a meeting following, or two meetings following that in November, both the ninth and the 23rd. That's our meetings for right now.
Motion to adjourn. Ms. Nyman, Mr. Updegrove, meeting adjourned. Everybody, thank you very much.
We're going to have an executive session following the school board meeting to discuss communications with council to address a contractual issue with Culverdale Tatcha.
Thanks, everyone.